Welcome, everybody. If I could have everybody stand up and we'll have Dana lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Behind you, Raina.
I will pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and supreme.
Thank you. Everybody can take a seat. And thanks for everybody being here today. Another packed house. It's great. Well over forty. I don't know the exact number yet, but that's really great. So everybody's got a chance to visit for a while. So I want to go through the tables and so that we don't miss any of our guests. But it looks like we're fine over at Maurice's table. Fine at this front table. Amy's table looks good. Uh, we've got Ollie here, so I want to let you do it.
There's a lot of them.
Raina, you can just have your table and the two back too.
I'm gonna try, and I'm sorry if I miss anyone. So we have Anders over here, student. We have Ollie here in the back. Um, let's see. I have Rachel Newby, one of our teachers. Marine's here. Becca Boswick, who is aunt. We have Ava, who's one of our students. Cruz is a student. Maddie is a student. We have moms, Tara and Megan. We have grandparents, Julie and David, and I'm sorry, Melissa. Okay.
So that was a clap for to welcome our guests, but kind of an extra clap there for Raina. That was pretty impressive. Um, we're fine at Guy's table. And I already got Anders introduced, so we've got everybody. Great. So thank you for everybody for being here. I just want to welcome everybody to our regular lunchtime meeting on Thursday, November thirteenth. A special thanks to our greeters, Dana and Amy. Amy, who I know had a, I could hear had a busy morning, so thanks a lot for rushing here and getting everything set up. Um, thanks in advance to our cleanup crew. Maybe not be signed up, but I know we always have four or five stick around and do that. So thanks. And Tanya, again, for organizing our meal service. It's once again excellent for our guests who don't know what you're eating, because you may not know. It's actually from Mose. Mose does lots of other food, we found out, for the catering. It's in a wide variety, so. Um, uh, thanks again, uh, for John with the IT and Mark with the finance, keeping track of everything. Uh, we're excited to have our November Students of the Month for our presentation, but prior to that, I want to, normally we'd be going right into our presentation, but we kind of have a special auction item today. And so I want to get the microphone. Sorry, Dana. I know you just sat down, but Doretta can get the microphone. Uh, just to put everybody kind of on notice, Doretta has generously offered to auction off some tickets with the proceeds going to local food banks. Uh, so I'd like to invite Doretta to explain this for, so everybody, and then I, and then I welcome everybody to be generous with your donation. This is a pretty awesome opportunity.
Okay. Can y'all hear me? So yesterday I was at the Chamber Lunch, in which we also had enchiladas at, so. Anyway, Steve over at Hot Sports Radio generously donated a pair of Ducks tickets along with a parking pass for your choice of either tomorrow night's game versus Minnesota or next Saturday's game versus USC. And so I am not able to use tickets for either of those events, so I thought it'd be fun to auction them off here at Rotary. And fifty percent of the proceeds will go to the Salvation Army Food Bank, and the other fifty percent will go to our Newport Food Bank run by Dave Adoff here.
Hey, Dave.
So you are welcome. So would be generous, let's start the bidding. Um, I have no idea what there were, other than what Freddie told me.
So I wanted to hear.
The seat? I have no idea.
Yeah, so, but I can tell you, I can tell you the worst seats for the USC game are going for about a hundred and fifty, the absolute worst seats.
Yeah.
That doesn't count.
Freddie says the parking pass is worth fifty bucks. And John, if you'll watch the chat to see if anybody gets online that right.
That doesn't count the parking pass, which you don't even really have the option to get unless you happen to be buying tickets from somebody who already has that, because the parking passes are already all sold um, to season ticket holders who are high up the list. And I, the Washington game's always going to be tough at the end of the season on the road. Um, but honestly, it probably comes down to that USC game. Uh, I think if they, if you're a Ducks fan, you want to see a game that's basically close to playoff level. Because it'll mean they'll be laser focused, uh, for the Washington game if they beat USC, but so.
And I've told, I've been told the Beavers fans probably won't bid, but if they do, you can fit, and everything else away to Ducks fans.
Even the Beavers fans probably know some Ducks fans in their orbits here.
Let's, let's start the bidding at a hundred dollars. Do I have somebody who'd pay a hundred? Trevor, anybody at one fifty?
So this is for the whole package, two tickets and a park.
Two tickets and the parking pass. Rick, Rick is at one fifty. Anybody at one seventy-five?
Come on, let's go.
Trevor, one seventy-five. Anybody at two fifty?
Two fifty.
Ryan, two fifty.
Come on.
Anybody go a little above two fifty?
We have season tickets.
We have friends.
We have extra seasons.
We have extra seasons. It goes to a good cost.
It is a good cost, and I like the two fifty number. Anybody want to be two fifty? Is there anybody online? John wants to go above two fifty? All right. There is three hundred. Okay. Anybody above three hundred?
You think?
I'm good.
We have a lot to cover in the meeting, so I'm going to close it at three hundred. I'm thinking after the meeting.
You gotta go first. Anybody online?
They, they check.
Okay. Uh, I'll go, Doretta, I'll go three fifty.
Oh, you go three fifty.
Come on.
I don't know. Anybody above three fifty? Going once, twice? So Brian Burner, three fifty.
Really, thank you, Doretta. Uh, as everybody knows, the food banks are really hurting this year. Uh, their funding is down, and there's, and there's also a lot of food insecurity. Um, while the SNAP benefits may or may not be coming back, the timing of that is unknown. Uh, so, uh, even, you know, I'm gonna get. I'm gonna get some football tickets out of this, but it's, uh, you know, still, if you, if, please think about making donations to the local food banks. You're gonna have lots of opportunities this season. They're, they're, they're in a lot of dire need.
I'll just add another hundred.
Thank you. Um, and so, and so thank you for everybody for participating in that, but with that, uh, please join me in welcoming Raina up to introduce our Students of the Month.
All right. Our first student of the month is Ava Daniels. She is the daughter of Tara Daniels of Depot Bay. She's on honor roll, has been athlete of the week for track, won the Outstanding Theory of Knowledge Award that Miss Newby teaches. Um, she's been part of leadership and lots of different committees and on campus. Um, she, after high school, wants to go to a four-year university and study abroad. And she listed a fun fact, but I don't know that it's really fun. Uh, it's interesting. Um, so her cat ran away and eight years later was found in Nebraska. So please welcome Ava.
Okay, so, um, hi, everyone. My name is Ava Daniels. I'm a senior in high school. Um, I'm varsity volleyball team captain. I throw javelin on the varsity track and field team. I'm an Ivy student. Um, I'm the senior class vice president and a member of clubs such as National Honor Society. Um, I even started a bowling club at my high school. Uh, you would think I know how to bowl, but I really don't, so it's, it's okay. And, um, some of these slides, some of these photos are like involved, the things that I do, like that's me with my baby niece after one of my last home games for volleyball. And that was me, um, during the homecoming football game. Uh, next slide. Um, okay, so I'll point out who my brothers are to make it easier. So the one in the white, like, Nike shirt, this one? That's, um, his name's Trent, and then this, this is Trey, and that's Zan, that's my mom, that's my dad, and that's me. So I don't know why I'm not looking at the camera, but anyways, uh, growing up, I've always, oh. So, okay, despite being involved in all these Newport activities, um, the weird thing is that I've not always been a Cub. I have three older brothers who all went to Taft. Two of my brothers, Trent and Zan, they graduated in two thousand sixteen. And then my other brother Trey, he graduated in twenty twenty. So I chose to come to Newport right before my freshman year because of the rigorous Ivy courses they offer. And I was just excited by the change. And so, um, growing up, I've always known, um, I've always been known as Matt and Tara's daughter, or Trey, Zan and Trent's baby sister. I was the daughter of the defensive line football coach, and my mom was the girls' basketball coach. My brothers were varsity athletes, a part of leadership, and one was on student council. Uh, my whole family was very well-known at Taft. My house, like, was constantly packed with my brothers and all their friends, and it was so loud, and things just always were happening. Uh, some of my favorite childhood memories are with my brothers and, um, I, some of them, I remember walking in to my brothers and all their friends, and they were like frantically making this dessert for my mom. And it was like a very complicated dessert, but the reason they were doing it was because my mom promised them she'd make them lasagna. And so, I don't know. And then, uh, my, I remember when I was little, being forced to go to football practices, and I was like, oh, I don't like going to that because it's so boring. And, but I remember thinking, at least my brothers and their friends on the team would help me make forks out of tackle dummies. I was like, at least I can do that. Um, you know, the next slide. So, um, they always like made my childhood really fun, exciting. But despite this, there were hardship hardships I faced as a child, such as my mom being diagnosed with a rare blood disease, acute intermittent, intermediate period when I was four. Um, ever since I was little, I've been extremely close with my mom. Uh, that's me and my mom, we were wearing matching dresses for Fourth of July. And, um, I've always just been really close with her, and even though she was diagnosed when I was four, um, and I was very young, I still remember it very well. And I remember being scared, but the, the thing that's good is I was lucky that I had my three brothers. Um, I had three protectors, I had three people that could make my childhood fun and normal, no matter the situation. And I'm just always grateful that they were there with me, and they always were just doing random things, like, I don't know why Zan has a beard and that, but I think it was the homing costume. Um, they, they're just such a big part of my life, and I feel to understand why I'm the person I am. You need to first understand how much I love my brothers. Um, so this is kind of me now. Um, now at Newport, I am not instantly recognized as Matt and Tara's daughter, or Trey, Trent and Zan's little sister. When I say my last name is Daniels, it doesn't spark something in people's minds that caused them to recognize me through my family. At Newport, I'm kind of just recognized as Ava. Um, at first it was hard. I was just always like connected to with my brothers, and it was just hard to be outgoing. When I was a kid, I was really outgoing, but I think that's mainly because I had my brothers as a safety net always. So in high school, there were times where I was pretty introverted. Um, I had to make my own name for myself. I had to get to know teachers and coaches, because unlike at Taft, no one knew who I was. Um, I know a lot of younger siblings, they get annoyed when a teacher or coach is like, oh, you're so-and-so's little sister, and I know people get annoyed by that, but I always kind of liked it. So I was like, I was just happy that someone knew the people that were so important to me. And I was happy that they recognized them in me, and so, yeah. Despite all these challenges, um, now in my senior year, I can say that I really came out my shell. Uh, I'm more extroverted, so much so that I met my friends because of my involvement in Newport, such as being involved in sports, like volleyball, track, like that's me and Bree, one of my friends, uh, after my senior night. It was sad, she's like just a junior, so I was like, oh, Bree's, I'm leaving. And that's me and Maddie on our senior sunrise. Yeah. Okay, um, well, kind of to conclude, I'm really happy with the person I've grown into after attending Newport these past four years. I believe that the experiences of coming to a new school will only help me when I undergo other significant changes, like attending college. I've learned how to be talkative and meet new people despite it being scary to me. If I had never transferred to Newport, I would have never met all my friends I have now. I think that if I had never expanded my bubble to Newport, I wouldn't have learned how to do new things. I think I would have been okay with staying comfortable. Now, I constantly participate in planned high school events, um, due to being involved in leadership and being in like a senior class leader. Um, like this was after Ironman, uh, so we had to coach, me and Maddie had to coach the senior guys to play volleyball. And then this is my mom and Maddie. We had to, for my Ivy Global politics class, we had to, I had to organize a protest about oceanic climate change. Ollie went to that too. Um, yeah, I think, I think people should know, um, that I am a little sister of three brothers to understand who I am, because that just really are the people who is important to me. But I think they should also know that I'm a person who walked into entirely new environment where no one really knew me at all. So at the end of the day, I'm just proud that I learned how to be more extroverted and talk to people.
Our next student is Oliver Peralta. He is the son of Megan Boswick, Terry of Newport, Oregon. He is a state champion, an avid student, is involved in Link Crew and leadership. He also hopes to go to college and study abroad after high school. Um, and his, one of his favorite classes is avid, so please welcome Oliver.
Hello? Okay, it works. All right. Um, hi, everyone. My name is Oliver Peralta. I want to start off by thanking my family and friends who came to listen to me speak. And for Ms. Mattson for nominating me for Student of the Month, and I also want to thank whoever cooked the food. That was great. It's amazing. Super hungry. Um, before I start talking, I want to talk about things I'm involved in. I play four different sports, soccer, basketball, unified basketball, kind of, kind of the same thing, uh, track, even though I only do one event, which is jav. Um, and I'm doing golf this year. Actually, we'll talk about it a little bit more on the other slide. Um, I guess you can say I did five, because I did football for a month, but I don't know if it like counts, because I like kind of quit throughout. Yeah. Um, I'm part of leadership. Um, part of, I was a part of Link Crew. If you guys don't know what Link Crew is, it's where you go the first day of school to help the freshmen around. Um, I am, I was senior class treasurer. I am junior class vice president, and I was a part, I was a part of prom committee. And I have helped with fundraisers. And this isn't relevant to me in high school, but in fifth grade, I did seventeen beach cleanups. Yeah. Yeah, administrators class.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Some of you guys probably know her. Um, you can go to the next slide, please. Okay, so I was born and raised here in Newport by my mom, Megan, top left corner. She's actually in the background now, recording. Um, and my dad, Juan Carlos, in the bottom right. Actually, that picture was me when I was, I think, on the orcas for state champ, or not state, but it was like a championship game, and you could see me holding a plastic trophy that was supposed to be gold. Um, the most important thing to me is my family. Um, my parents divorced when I was seven, and I was mainly raised by my mom. Um, she taught me about hard work, determination, and to push myself to be a better person. And my stuff, and my dad was still part of my life, going to my events, going to my games. Did I turn it off? No, I didn't. Okay. Okay. Um, where was I? Oh, my dad. And he was still going to all my sporting events, you know, being there for me until he was deported this summer. Um, since then, I've, I have had a hard time adjusting to him not being here, the experience in my senior year, and being there for my senior night, my graduation, and any accomplishments that I have. Uh, even though he's not here, I, luckily, I still have my grandparents, lots of aunts, uncles, and my cousins who help support me, and my friends. Um, so in the middle, there's a picture of me and my family. I can't remember for what game that is. It was this year. Was it for playoffs? No. Okay, playoff game. Uh, so on the left, it's my grandpa, who's in the back, or actually, he's right here. Uh, my mom, me, my grandma, my aunt, and my little cousin Bodie, who says he's not here, and my uncle Matt. Yeah, I'm going to go to the next slide. All right, so some fun facts about me is that I love to cook food. Doesn't matter what culture it is. I love cooking food, actually. Um, well, especially Mexican. Um, the one on the right is me and my cousin. I didn't have any pictures of me like actually like cooking, like action shots, but that's me and my cousin in Rome cooking. We were in a cooking class for cooking pasta. It's actually really good. It was really fun. Cool experience. Um, I love to travel a lot. I've been to, forgot how many countries I've been to, but I've been to a bunch. And one thing that I love to do in countries are I love to try coffees. I love coffee. And in the middle is also a picture in Rome that I took of, uh, I'm not familiar with coffees. Yeah, cappuccino? Yeah, there it is. Okay. Um, and I remember my mom, we were in, I was five years old in Puerto Rico, and I remember her letting me try coffee there, like just a sip, not like an actual cup. So I also love to play golf, and this is something I've never like tried until this summer, where I was kind of bored, and I wanted to do something fun. And I was like, might as well go golf with some buddies of mine. And that's a picture, just at Agid. And I actually loved it so much that I got a membership, and I went two times a day this summer every day. Um, even though I am not good at all, like at all. Actually, me and Cruz went golfing yesterday. We did a scramble, where it's, where it's like you both hit a ball, and you guys pick the best balls, and you try, you know, try to get a lower score. We shot, was it under? We shot under. Far, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Uh, yeah. And this is a, this is like a weird, weird fact, but I can paw my toes every ten seconds. Which is like, it's like, yeah, it's kind of strange, but something I can do. Okay, next slide, please. So, um, I love playing soccer. I've been playing soccer since I was three, which means I've been playing soccer for fifteen years, because I'm eighteen now. Um, I have met a lot of people who I'm still close, uh, with now, and have all grown up, played more soccer with different teams and different coaches, even different like programs. Um, I have grown more in the community, and people who I played soccer with weren't just my friends, but they were more like a family to me. And top right corner is, I guess it's not like a little baby photo, but it's like, I think I was in like sixth grade or something. But that's just like a, it's like a representation of kind of like a family to me, because I play with a lot of those people still, even though some graduated. But, yeah. Bottom right is a photo of this year for soccer. We were in Dayton, I believe, when we tied them. We actually are the only team that was tied this year. Um, soccer has also taught me a lot about teamwork, leadership, and responsibility, as well as time management. Because when you're in high school, you have a lot of classes, plus you miss a lot of games, and you can't go home after school to do homework. You have to stay up late at night. So it's taught me a lot about time management. And the one on the top left was this year after our game, we won. I just thought it was kind of cool. It's like an action shot. You can see Becker in the front, my friend Judah, me, and just my team. And then top or bottom left is a picture that I took after we won state. Me and my buddy Becker and Jordy. I don't know if you guys know Jordy. But, yeah, and then the one in the middle, which is us after winning state, I thought it was a pretty cool photo. Um, yeah. You can go to the next slide. So this is something that I want to talk about, because I feel like he's just a part of me. So, um, on the first, so the year that we won state in two thousand twenty-three, um, a couple of months before, uh, my friend Santi passed away. And, uh, I just wanted to talk about him because he's a part of me, and he's a part of this community, and I just want to speak his name. Um, so the Newport High School Boys Soccer Team won state championship in two thousand twenty-three. And on the first day of tryouts before soccer, or I guess it was like towards the end of soccer, we were doing labs. Um, he fainted, passed away later that night from an undiagnosed heart condition. And after that, you know, I had to learn a lot about, um, okay, sorry. Where was I? Um, actually, I'll talk about this for a second. I thought it was really cool to see, and it was, it inspired me when, after he passed away, how the community came together, and how we did fundraisers for his family, and how more, how we dedicated the season for him, especially I did, um, because I was pretty close with them. Um, question people ask me is how does death affect me? And I never really knew how to answer that. But it changed me as a person, because after he passed away, I learned the significance of family and friends, and how it's important to show people that you care about them. And I learned to not take anything for granted. Um, Santi was a kind person. He always knew what to say, and always made sure that everyone around him felt included and wanted. And I think it was pretty cool how we won state for him that year. Uh, so the photo on the far left is a picture of me and him when we were younger, playing soccer. Um, and then just like the rest of the photos, actually, the one to the right is a picture of me and him before a school dance. I forgot what dance. I think it was graduating eighth grade, which was pretty cool. Um, you remember that? Um, and then these are just some pictures of Santi. Um, yeah, I just want to thank everyone for listening to me and giving me this opportunity to speak his name and to talk about me. Thank you.
Ava and Ollie, if I could have you guys come back up here for just a second. And so these are in recognition of you guys being Students of the Month. We really appreciate you guys coming here to speak to us. One of the main focuses for Rotary is that we are trying to eradicate polio. So on behalf of our club, and in thanks for your presentation, we're going to vaccinate fifty kids in your guys' name for speaking today. It's awesome. So thank you.
Okay, students, don't sit down yet, please.
Ava, come back.
Back there. Thank you. I have, I have a few things to say. Ollie, I've seen you at the Aspire Center. So John Daigle and I are the newest Aspire mentor. He's got me beat. He has three Aspire students, and I have now two, as of yesterday. It's something that Rotary really believes in. I told John that, and um, Mrs. Di that I would bring brochures, so I brought brochures. They need a whole bunch more. They need a whole bunch more Aspire mentors. So please, 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 if you have time. It's really, it warms your heart. Having said that. I have another announcement that concerns Rotary. You two are amazing speakers. There is something called the Rotary Four Way Speech Contest of the Things We Think, Say, and Do. I hope you will both apply. Mrs. Dye and I will be. Holding a session in February and it'll be March fifth, right here, the finals. We'll probably have a preliminary and then a final. One other thing, Ollie, I'll play golf with you anytime. I've played since. I was a lot younger and I'm still trying to improve. So anytime.
All right. Let me know when.
Oh, yeah. Um, my friend Dana here said, okay, let me, let's talk about Rotary Four Way Speech Contest. If you win at this club, you will win three hundred dollars cash. Second prize is a hundred dollars cash. Third, did I say that wrong? Two hundred dollars cash. Third prize is a hundred dollars cash and everybody that participates will get fifty dollars cash. So I encourage you to, um, to speak. And then I'm also the District Rotary Four Way Speech Contest Chair. If you win at this club, you will vote a district. The first prize at district is three thousand dollars. The second prize is two thousand dollars and the third prize is one thousand dollars. Only one student in Newport. Have ever gone to district and that was Elliot Crowder a few years ago. I mean, gone to district and won, not gone to district, not just gone to district. Thank you, Brian. I saw it. It's like, what was she saying? Anyway. Um, and then I have one more thing. Um, I'm really happy. I'm twenty-five dollars happy towards Lincoln County Foundation. A lot of good things are going well with me right now. Um, my class is almost over. I've got, it, it ends just after Thanksgiving. And I'll be happy that it ends, but I'm really, really happy to have taught and everything else is going good. So twenty-five dollars.
Hey, so I got a couple of quick announcements to make. Um, uh, so for. Hopefully you guys, I know sometimes you get the emails from John about the meeting. Um, but there's other stuff on there. So instead of just deleting those emails. Uh, there's, because he also provides the signups for the Community Thanksgiving Dinner. Um, he has the link on there if you want to sign for that. What time?
We have both. I'm, I'm talented.
Yeah, so, so you gotta read the, you gotta read the whole email, Tony. So that's both of them all. Uh, and I get it. There's a lot of stuff that we send out.
Part of that problem, I know, but I want to make sure people know. Uh, but that's, uh, that's our, that's one of our projects for community service. Uh, so the Community Thanksgiving Dinner at the Sixty Plus Center here in Newport. Um, and again, there's opportunities to volunteer and serve on November twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third. And again, thank you to Julia, uh, for championing this on behalf of our club and obviously on behalf of our community.
If anyone is particularly comfortable with raw meat, sounds weird, but I need to prep sixteen turkeys on Friday, the twenty-first. And if anyone is available to help me with that, it's just unwrapping them, getting all the stuff out and getting them ready to put in the oven at three P M. on the twenty-first.
Is that Saturday?
Uh, Friday.
Friday, I can't.
That's okay, Brian. If anyone else can, that'd be great.
Okay, I can't tell you how many thousands of animals I've processed. I have no problem processing. What time?
And I'll be there.
Yeah, and so if, uh, um, probably Amy or John, if you need something to do before the booster, uh. And you want to process. So I think that's that night. That's why I.
Yeah.
Um, again, I wanted to remind everybody about the Corvallis Rotary Leadership Institute Seminar. That's in the end of January, thirty-first and February first. If you, uh, want to know, if you want the link for that, you can find it online. But I can also provide it if anybody's interested in attending that. And. To Tanya's point, uh, the Rotary Club Holiday Dinner and Celebration, it's, it's also, there's a link on there. That I think that's just from yesterday. We, we just got it. So that's why that's new. Uh, but the signups on there, we sign up. It really helps us not, you know, knowing in it. Further in advance really helps Tanya with the planning, knowing, you know, how many kids we're going to have. You know, there's a lot of things that go into it. Um, uh, so it's not just, uh, how many meals or anything like that. Um, before we go into other announcements, if I could just real quickly, because I've got people here today, I could have Josie come up and we can make you official. Whether you like it or not. So congratulations to Josie. She got her blue badge. And since we didn't have Mark here last week, I wanted to bring Mark up. Uh, we got. Uh, if, if you were here last week, you know, we got to do a lot of, uh, above and beyond awards for our club members. And Mark's certainly one of those people. Um, so we got to recognize them, but you know, Mark was off vacationing and having fun. Uh, he was above and beyond out here.
Trying to avoid.
But, uh, really, Mark is, you know, um, we've got. I say anchor, not in a bad way. We've got a few real anchors to our club. And Mark certainly will be anchors to our club, uh, with regards to making us function. Uh, making sure we don't step in it in the district or national level. These are filed correctly. Our taxes are done. All the things that a lot of us just take for granted. That the wheels are turning in the background. A lot of those wheels are real. So thank you, Mark, for the. Um, I want to open it up to other, oh, Amy, other announcements? Yeah, please. Yes.
Yes, yeah. Um, so I just wanted to do an announcement as part of the Rotary Youth Exchange Committee. So four of us, um, met last week. We met four different candidates for next year's exchange. And as you know, from, um, a generous Rotarian that had passed away, he left his entire estate to. To this program. So that's how we're able to send two exchange students fully paid, at least two every year. And then also, um, provide for the ones that are inbound as well. Um, we picked two students last week and we're really excited about them. It's Olivia Dandridge and Vienna Booths. And they will be, um, going through the process to district. They've been forwarded. We feel very confident. And we'll be getting them ready. We're so excited. But that also means that we're going to host two exchange students. So we need families. Um, so if anybody's interested, you know, contact any of us. We'll, we'll, we'll get you in touch with hosting. Um, it's a very rewarding experience. We, our family is hosted four times. Um, we keep in touch with all of them. Um, I'm going to a wedding of one of them this summer in Germany. Um, it's truly a, a special experience. So I encourage if you're at all interested, and if you're busy, your family's busy, that's the best. They, they do well in really busy families and it's just one more kid you have to drop off at the high school. So, thank you.
Other public announcements, happy bucks. Oh, Michelle. And we do have the. We do have the, 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 um, the bell ringer flyers out on the table.
Yeah, so if you look on your tables, you'll see the little postcards that say register to ring. And that is our website for going on and volunteering to be a bell ringer. Kettles will be out starting on Monday. And the more volunteers we get, the less people I have to pay to be out there. So. Um, help us raise some funds with that, or you can sponsor a kettle that covers the cost of paying a bell ringer to be out there so that the kettle is one percent net profit. All of those things, um, for, because I keep getting inquiries about it. Um, our angel tree tags are a little bit delayed because our printer is broken and Chuck has informed me that if we try to print things on it, it may burn down our building. So. We're not going to do that. Um, but those will be going out as soon as possible. Um. So that's kettles and angel tree. And I just wanted to give some happy bucks also because as we all know, this last Tuesday was Veterans Day. And I am the daughter of a Korean War veteran. Um, yes, he was old when I was born. I didn't realize until just a couple of years ago that I, how much I was affected by the Korean War as a nineties baby. Um, because. My dad suffered with undiagnosed PTSD until I was about eight years old. And I was the only person that could calm him down and bring him back to reality when he had his psychotic breaks and thought he was in a field hospital in Korea. Um. And it took fifty years for his injuries from the war to kill him, but it did. Um. My dad was a Korean, a victim of the Korean War who died in two thousand and four, which sounds really weird, but, um, lead poisoning will do that to you on travel. So I know that doesn't sound like happy bucks, but I'm grateful for the experiences I have, I don't have had because they have helped me to understand. Um, the experiences of veterans and others who, uh, deal with PTSD on a regular basis. So thank you to everyone who has served in our military. Thank you to the relatives of those who've served in our military. Because it's been almost as much a sacrifice for the families as it is for the vets themselves. So, um, I want to give fifty dollars to, uh, just because it's a thing I love, put the beach cleanups. My plastic project, um, because yeah, I'm grateful for the vets in our country.
Thank you, Michelle. Well, happy bucks. I'm going to start hitting up some of the, we have a little bit of time, so I want to catch up on our November anniversaries and birthdays. Amy, do you know when your anniversary was?
It's eight years, right? November? Nine?
Nine.
Nine, okay.
Um, I'm nine dollars happy.
I know probably doesn't know it was her anniversary.
I think I'm seven.
We'll, we'll count my number anniversary as far as mine.
And I'll be seven dollars.
Thanks, Michelle. Uh, we have birthdays. I don't know. Did we already do Freddie's birthday? No. It's been pretty expensive since I've been giving a dollar fifty a year for my birthday. So fifty-eight dollars this year. To me. Since the microphone's right there, Tony, you know, it was your anniversary. Your member anniversary, sorry. Yeah, not your wedding anniversary. Borrow that too.
Oh, I feel like I've been involved in this for at least ten, eleven years since Freddie has been. But I officially was four years.
Yeah, great. Nice job.
So I'll be forty dollars happy.
Great, thank you. And we'll hit you up next week. Oh, Marshall.
Mister President, um, I'd like to give twenty dollars on behalf of you. Um, and that's for not sticking me with a three hundred dollar bill or two tickets to a game that I will already be at for twenty dollars.
I doubt I'm going to get to go either, but I don't make for somebody's Christmas present. Cheaper than all that. Uh, I'll be happy bucks. Somebody's got to be happy that the fall season's over.
I'm going to do, I have happy bucks. I want to do fifty because they didn't have any Beaver tickets for sale.
If you watch, if you watched the basketball game last night, you'd have something else to be happy for. You like these kids who weren't alive probably the last time that happened in the whole game. Those of us who have seen it a few times, though, it was kind of fun. I felt bad. I mean, you can't feel worse for that kid in that situation. Thought he was doing everything right. He cost a game, but way to go Beavers.
Thank you, Brian, for saying that. I know it's hard to say.
I refer the Beavers every, that, that's the difference between Beavers and Ducks fans. I refer the Beavers every game they're not playing the Ducks. One at a time.
Um, I'm ten dollars happy for this public service announcement. I'm going to mention my story. So. Um, we are now open and accepting jewelry for Lincoln County Food Share's, um, jewelry sale that they have this coming spring. Diamonds by the Sea, uh, helps them sort and price their jewelry for them. So if you have anything that is broken. Uh, in your jewelry boxes that you don't wear, it can be parts, it can be broken, it can be old watches, it can be watch cases, it can be beads. Anything that is sitting around, um, costume jewelry is more than welcome. But if you bring that into Diamonds by the Sea. Um, we will gladly accept it for you. We will also give you a tax write-off donation form. So, um, and that goes from now clear until spring. So I'll probably make this announcement a couple of times to remind you, but. Hit those old jewelry boxes and clean them out when you're ready. Thanks.
Uh, Megan Shane is online on Zoom. She said she had to leave, but she's still there, but we're going to forget she said that. And I just announced for her. Uh, she also mentioned Sandy, Sandy Rumigoo turned eighty-five on Tuesday. So if you see her, tell her happy birthday. Um, and also this is what, uh, Megan Shane put in the chat for Zoom. I happily leave shortly, but I would like to give one hundred dollars towards Interact Club in honor of Ava and Ollie. I've watched them grow into such amazing young adults over the past fifteen years. Congratulations you two and thank you to their parents.
And I want to be fifty dollars happy because again, I, 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 I didn't get to know Ava growing up because I guess she was a taft, or taft, excuse me. Uh, in Lincoln City, but I did get to see Ollie since he's a little kid. Uh, my kids kind of are on each, each class. Uh, one older, one older, one younger. So, uh, Ollie probably doesn't remember, uh, little kid birthday parties and stuff like that. Uh, but one of them at least, he wrapped me in like three rolls of toilet paper. Tied me up as a bad guy. He was playing a police officer. I want to be twenty-five dollars happy for that, that he's not tying me up anymore. But I also want to be twenty-five dollars happy, uh, for Noobs who I guess might have left. Uh, but, uh. There's a couple of sports, for whatever reason. I mean, cross-country, it's pretty clear why that's such a supportive sport. It, it's tough. I know it's very, it's kind of like wrestling that way. It's very individual and tough. But for some reason, everywhere I've ever gone since I've been, you know, junior high myself. Javelin, javelin coaches. I have no idea why, but they're a tight group. And Noobs, Noobs is a great coach in everything, but, uh, I'm sure that's part of why she's here. But she's a great coach, so.
Um, yesterday I was at the Corvallis Hospital for a procedure. So now I have one more thing that I know that's not wrong with me. Fifty dollars towards Polio.
And Mark, the fifty for me just to the local foundation. Uh, anything else? Or we got to get to some of our business. Um, we got a secretary's report from Julia. Uh, so please welcome Julia.
Hello, Rotarians. Very good. Um, so for today, we have, um, I'm a secretary and I got all my duties, uh, is to keep attendance. And so that is part of why we do a secretary's report. So you can just be in the loop about how many people we have around. So with our thirteen guests, welcome. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We have thirteen Rotarians in the room with us, seven online in Zoom. And so sixty-one total attendees and fifty-four in the room. So we are reaching capacity. So thank you, everyone, for coming. It's great to see everyone. Yep. Um, so, uh, and then our membership incentive award goes to Marshall, who just laughing again. Marshall. All right, he gets five dollars. That's all. Thank you.
And John, if we get social media and fifty fifty.
Let's hand out some money. The social media award winner is Mark Miranda for five dollars. And this week's fifty-fifty is worth seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents to the.
Um, so our next one, regular lunch meetings here on November twentieth, uh, here at noon, and our presenters are going to be, uh, Charlie Plybon.
And Dr. Nicole.
Okay, so they are coming. I, I, I forgot to ask you to make sure. Uh, but they're with Surf Rider and it's going to be regarding the Yaquena Bay Oyster cleanup. Uh, so please try to make it, um. Uh, so please try to make it, um, and because that's our, yeah, I think that's our last meeting for the month because of Thanksgiving. Uh, so, uh, it might be the last decent meal you get, depending on home situations. Uh, so with that, uh, let's see. Amy, you want to lead us out of the hallway desk?
Yes.
Okay, please rise.
The four-way test of the things we think, say, or do. Second, the justice of all concerned. Third. Fourth.
Thank you, everybody.